Hi, welcome to our regular school committee meeting today, Thursday, September 27th, at 2018. You'll notice we have a few open spaces across the table. Ms. Morgan is at curriculum night for her, one of her children, or several of her children, as is Allison, as is Ms. Elmer, Mr. Spiegel, and Dr. McNeil.
Dr. McNeil.
And Mr. Schlickman is out for a family event. And I also want to welcome our teacher rep, Marion Nolan, thank you for coming, and our new student council rep, who is Kaelin Darty, she's a senior, she's on student council, she's also a varsity athlete, co-president of the Red Cross, and she's working on forming a new club called Common Ground, they're waiting on an advisor, and it's looking for bipartisan solutions to problems. So, thank you, and you both are, of course, welcome to participate as we continue. So, we will start with public participation. Okay. Okay, so, in public participation, we listen to what people have to say, we don't traditionally respond either now, we may take something up later in the meeting, or we often refer it to subcommittees. So, Elena Jakubiak, and I'm sorry if I mess up anyone's names.
Hi, my name is Elena Jakubiak, I'm the parent of a second grader and a fifth grader at Bishop. Some of you may recall, I came here last February, and I spoke and asked the school committee to develop guidelines for class sizes. I understood it would be a hard process. Unfortunately, there are not yet guidelines, and the situation for our second graders is not satisfactory. We're asking an IEP aide and a building sub to act as large class TAs. We're also told at the same time that the necessity of an aide depends on class makeup. But the IEP aides have to focus on their IEP students, building subs have to sub across all classrooms, and no third party is working to assess class makeup. We're at a point where as parents, we need to advocate for a solution for our particular situation. So, I'm asking you now, please to tell us what we need to do to demonstrate the need for additional support in these classrooms. What is our path forward? How do we get the necessary support for our teachers and students? Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Popper.
Hi, I want to thank you all for taking the time to listen to us again at this meeting. And back again to address the topic of the large class sizes in Arlington and specifically Bishop. Last, at the last meeting, I appreciated the verbal support and recognition that these class sizes do need extra support. I saw that there was a first grade aide position posted for Stratton, which is wonderful because they have large class sizes as well, and I'm wondering what the, if there are going to be full-time aides also hired for Bishop's second grade, and if so, what the timeline is. At the last meeting, I shared a letter that highlighted the bigger picture problem which we're facing at Bishop and at most of the elementary schools in town, which was signed by 40 Bishop parents, some of them are here tonight. And this letter was based on the data that was made public, which I understand after the last meeting might not be the accurate numbers, but it pointed out that our class sizes, in comparison to all the surrounding towns, are much higher, as well as higher as the state averages, according to the DOE website. The average size in the surrounding towns are all under 20, and the average for the state is 18. Bishop's average is 24. As Dr. Bodie mentioned at the last meeting, research shows that there are real benefits once you get to reduce class sizes, especially in the early grades, K through 3. And even those studies, they quantify small classes as 18, and we pointed out that we might not reach 18 in Arlington, but I think that we can strive to at least move closer to that goal. And if you're unfamiliar with the studies, if you visit the CenterforPublicEducation.org, I encourage everyone to revisit or reread the studies that have been done that show the benefit to students. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Amy Moylan.
I brought a prop. Hi, folks, my name is Amy Moylan. Thank you for listening. Thank you also for what you're representing, and hi to the folks I haven't met yet. I'm a parent of Luca, who's in first grade, and a parent of an incoming kindergarten next year, but I sit before you as a teacher of 19 years. I teach first grade at the Cambridge Public Schools, and my voice is a little hoarse because I was at my own curriculum night the other night. And one of the things I did was I passed around this giant pencil and had all the parents just introduce themselves and say what, a little bit about their first grade experience. And one of the parents after said, "I like what you added about the giant pencil and how we got to know each other. Why didn't you do that three years ago when I had the other sibling?" And I said, "Well, I had 25 students that year. I couldn't do it that year." And she said, "Oh, so, class size matters." And I said, "Well, it's interesting that you say that because in Arlington now, it's something that I think folks are having a good kind of problem with. People want to come to Arlington. The Bishop School is championing the teachers and the students with bursting seams." So, I'm here to just say three things. I'm also the district trainer for Responsive Classroom. Responsive Classroom incorporates all the socio-emotional aspects of what students need to feel successful in school. Yes, that connects with class size, but I'm here to say that it's, class size does not just equate to test scores. The lower class size does not just equal that, and I think we're, we all want more than just high test scores. For the students that I've had in the past, and I've had classes as small as 14 and classes as big as 27, I will tell you that the students I connect with and the relationships I have are built in the time that I can have them. And Cambridge Public Schools has a colloquium every year, the first day that we get back. Seniors in high school stood up and talked about the teachers that made an impact, and what they said was, it wasn't about what they taught, it was about how they saw me and how they saw what I was good at, even if it was something outside the classrooms. Spending the time to take, to take the time to develop those relationships takes time. In a class with 20 or less, you have the time to do that. You can get around to each reader, you can get around to each kid and ask them what they really did on the weekend, and you can get around to every parent and know their names and know their family and their culture. As it gets up in the numbers, what you see is not necessarily lower test scores. Over time, that may happen, but what you see is less of a connection. That's my time, that's my wrap-up. My ending statement is that class size matters, and it matters to teachers, and when there's happy, supportive teachers, they can happily support their students in all the realms that we want them to grow. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Hillary Graham.
I think it's a great verse, I didn't realize how that works.
That's fine. Rachel Oliveri.
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 Thank you, Dr. Bodie, and the school committee for giving us the opportunity to present to you here today. I'm Rachel Oliveri, the Arlington School Sustainability Coordinator, and I'm here with Hillary Graham, a parent who co-chaired the Bracket Green Initiatives Group and initiated the call for green cleaning in our classrooms. We are proposing a modification to the 2012 Policy on Green Cleaning, the school committee policy on green cleaning, Section ECD. This policy states, quote, "The Arlington Public Schools will use green cleaning products and practices to support the goal of maintaining a healthy, safe, and clean environment for students, faculty, and staff," end quote. Upon review of the list of required green seal products, it appears the policy is intended for institutional cleaning of school buildings by custodial staff. We are requesting that the school committee consider modifying the current green cleaning policy to include a specific section on classroom cleaning by teachers and students. All schools distribute class supply lists, and these consistently include a request for disinfectant wipes, and primarily Clorox brand is listed. The Clorox website states, quote, "For surfaces that may come in contact with food, a potable rinse is required." It also states, quote, "Clorox Disinfecting Wipes Should Not Be Used For Personal Cleansing," end quote. In addition, in order to disinfect, a surface must be kept wet with the product from four to 10 minutes, depending on the types of wipes. At Bracket, we became aware that children were using these disinfecting wipes daily on their desks without gloves or washing hands after, without rinsing the surfaces as recommended before eating, and without weighting the amount of time required for disinfecting. We consulted with the district nurse, who in a letter which we also have here, supported the use of a safe, non-toxic vinegar cleaner, the Bracket Green Team made for school classrooms, and also stated that proper handwashing with soap is by far the best cleaning and disinfecting technique. We understand that many teachers and parents are concerned about the spread of germs, especially during flu season, and feel disinfectant cleaning is necessary. However, given the wipes are not used in the way that they are actually disinfecting according to the instructions, we are not accomplishing this goal, and we are unnecessarily exposing students to direct contact with products that have a, quote-unquote, "keep out of reach of children" label. We recommend the revised policy prohibit the use of cleaners used in classrooms with a "keep out of reach of children" label, and those that state a potable rinse is required before eating, or that they should not be used for personal cleansing. We also recommend the revised policy provide a list of green classroom cleaners, which we have shared with you, which we will share with you. We understand that in addition to the revised policy, we will need to educate the school community so that classroom supply lists at all the schools can be modified. This is something I can do in my position through my outreach to principals and green teams. Thank you.
Thank you. Hillary Graham.
Thank you so much for having us here. And when we started looking into this green cleaning issue, I was absolutely thrilled to see that the school committee already had a policy on green cleaning, and it's one of the things I love about the Arlington schools, is that we're so forward-thinking. So, I don't have much to add, Rachel said it all, but I just wanted to mention the handout that I gave out. And so, what I included on the first page, front and back, are photocopies of the labels of two different brands of wipes, and then some quotes from the Clorox website. The second page is a letter from the school nurse, and the back of the page is from the website that she quoted me, that she, that she sent me to, which was actually for hospital personnel, so I didn't include the part about protecting patients and so on and so forth. And then, the third page is the Bracket Green Cleaning List. So, and, yeah, we just think, in terms of your intention in the green cleaning policy to maintain a healthy environment for the children and the teachers and the staff, that the use of these products in the classroom is actually not supporting that, and, in fact, is much more directly used by the students and the staff and the faculty than the custodial cleaning supplies, which are following your policy. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. That's the end of public participation. Thank you all. Moving on, we're going to talk about the review of summer building maintenance by Steve Nestorak.
Oh, could I do that?
Oh, I'm sorry. Just one sec.
Do my interruption just like two minutes?
Steve?
Thanks. Well, Rachel Oliveri is here tonight, and actually, after their presentation, it's quite timely that I wanted to just sort of jump ahead in the agenda because I know she's going to be leaving. Rachel was hired by the town in 2016 to be our Sustainability Coordinator, and through her efforts, we've been able to do a lot more in the district than we've done before. We've had this intention of trying to be as intentional about safety, nutrition, sustainability, reducing greenhouse gases, and I can talk in a minute about a couple of those things. So, what Rachel has done for us has helped coordinate that. She wrote the application to the Department of Education last year, in which we were then nominated for a national award. And we were one of two school districts in Massachusetts, Minton Upton being the other one, to be recognized by the U.S. Department of Education as being a green school district. The Green Ribbon actually was created as a name, actually coming from Leave No Child Behind, Blue Ribbon, and so, they wanted something comparable in this area, which is, people have asked, well, why, how'd they ever get that name, Green Ribbon School? So, last week, I went down to Washington, DC, to the award ceremony, and this is the plaque that Arlington Public Schools has received in recognition of all of our efforts in the area, in three major areas. The first area is reducing greenhouse emissions, the second one has to do with health, wellness, nutrition, and the third area is curricula. And it was interesting when Rachel put the application together last year, really, to see all of it together in one place, because we knew all these things were happening, but to see it as a coordinated effort was very, both inspiring to, I think, all of us that we're doing this work, but also motivating to keep doing this work. So, your presentation tonight is quite timely, it's something that we probably, not probably, we need to look at. Years ago, it's been, probably early on, I mean, it's at least 10 years, eight years, that we've been intentional about using green products, and actually, Steve Nestorak, who is our new director of facilities, maybe even can address a little bit of that tonight in his presentation. But I thought, well, Rachel was here, it would be important to, to mention this, it's going to be my report later, but I'd like her to have the acknowledgement of all the work she's doing to help us. But let me just mention a few things in each of these three categories. And we do composting now in all the schools, and that was really very helpful to have her help migrate that from one school to the next. We have solar panels on six of our schools, our exterior lights have been trained, changed to LED. We've done any kind of kitchen and toilet and faucet upgrades to the, the most energy-efficient type. And in the area, and these are just some of the things, but in the area of nutrition and fitness, we all know what a great contribution Arlington Eats makes to our school district in providing nutritious snacks for our students. We have mindfulness training in many of our schools. We have fitness classes before and after school. We have walk and bike to school days. We clean with environmental friendly, and hopefully now, we're going to extend that. We have curricula that focuses on mental, mental good health and emotional health and open circle. In terms of the curriculum, at the elementary and middle school, almost all of our, all of our science lessons have an environmental lessons as part of the curriculum. At the high school, we have environmental classes in, both at the curriculum level, honors level, and AP level. We, for years, and this goes back almost two decades, we have backpacking and winter survival courses, and the motto is, is leave no trace. We have school gardens in many schools, we have green teams in all schools, and that is really one of Rachel's great contributions. So, I love this quote by the green team at Thompson, when they were asked, "Why should Arlington Public Schools get this award?" They said, "We are awesome, we are powerful, we can change the world." That's great. And I have to say, when I was down in DC, a number of other states asked, "How does a district do this?" Because most of the awards were to individual schools, and many of them private schools. And I said, that, well, one, you have to, the intention, for sure, and realize this is important. But then, you know, it really helps to have somebody who's coordinator to help us in all of the efforts we do, and so I want to thank Rachel, while she's here, for all her hard work, and, and thank you for what you'll be doing for us as we go forward.
Thank you. Thank you. That's wonderful, thank you. And now, we'll move on to our facilities report.
Good evening, I'm, can you hear me? I'm Steve, I have a loud voice. I'm Steve Nestorak, Director of Facilities, and I assume you all got my simple summary of the projects we've completed this summer and some personnel. So, I guess I'll start with personnel and give you a few highlights. On the custodial side, I think what, I've been here about six months now, and so I've been focused really on a couple of things, which is communication and teamwork, and to get the custodial staff, particularly through the leadership of a senior custodian, to work more in concert with the principals. And to that means, we've been doing what we call weekly huddles, and so that includes myself, or another member of the facilities team, the custodial team, sometime the principal. And the purpose of these 10 or 15-minute weekly huddles is basically to first, support each other and celebrate or offer an appreciation of what's going right, and then, secondly, to hear from the custodial staff, principals, teachers, what we need to do better to help support whatever needs to be supportive at that particular school. So, I think that the feedback thus far has been good. This is kind of going back, as I'm told from people who've been here a longer time, before emails, text messaging, this is just good old-fashioned, face-to-face, at-the-school communication. So, I think that's been the main focus in the last couple of months with the custodial staff. On the maintenance staff, again, working across the town and the school properties, the maintenance craftsman, as they're called, we've been really working on two primary initiatives. One is, we created a helpline, so if a school, a senior custodian needs help, urgent matter, you know, leaky pipe, boiler's not working, they can call one number, someone will answer the line, and then we dispatch our internal or external resources to solve the problem. And the second thing is to dial in in a more effective way, preventive maintenance. So, rather than having vendors or our people show up kind of unannounced at random, that scheduling has been kind of pre-approved by the principals based on the programs of the time of year, what they'd like to see, and also meet the needs of what we have to do in terms of boiler maintenance, elevator inspections, and the like. Again, that's been generally received well, and we're still working primarily with our outside vendors to get the hang of, you just can't show up at a moment's notice to do whatever you want, so it's less disruptive to the, to the school program. We've had some changes there, and we're still looking to fill, hopefully in the next couple of weeks, the point person, if you will, on the helpline, which is the maintenance supervisor. So, that kind of rounds out the, the big picture on the personnel side of the department. And then, on capital projects, kind of going to that, those are the three major capital projects that we've been working on, as most of you know, are the Gibbs School, which opened at Labor Day on, on September 4th. That project came in on time and looks like about $100,000 under budget. And the second project we've been working on is the Hardy Edition. That's a six-classroom addition to the Hardy School. That'll be completed at the beginning of December with, open for school in early January. That budget, which is 4.8 million, we're quite a bit under that at this point, and we're kind of, what I'm told by the, the project team, we're kind of past the major risk hurdles in terms of construction. And then, finally, the picture up on the wall is the Lake Street Playground, which is at the Hardy School, that opened this week. And the picture's a little blurry, but it, without even having to announce it, it was, I think, full in about 15 minutes, as soon as the, the construction fence came down. And we're starting, I'm working with Jim Feeney, who's working through a selection process, and we'll start, once we've selected the, the design firm, we'll start on the Chandler Street side of Hardy for the design of their, the, a new playground on the other side of the Hardy School. Kind of touching on what Kathy was saying a minute ago on energy projects, we've complete, completed two energy project implementations, one at the Bishop School, one at Odysseum. Both of them complete what was a two-year program to put LED lights throughout. And at Hardy School, where we should have later this year, about half of the LED fixtures on the existing building changed out. So, those are the three ones that came to the Green Community Grants this summer. On the summer projects, the approach, the Superintendent of Building Maintenance, Mark Miano, really takes the lead on projects that aren't the normal routine repairs, but are projects typically that are 5,000 to 10,000, up to, say, 300,000. And this summer, over the course of the summer, across the 10 schools, we did about, he did about 70 projects, and there was a breakdown by school. They involved everything from adding security swipe cards to the schools, to refurbishing gym floors, and everything pretty much in between. And so, what we did, that was planned out in April, May, and then we implemented through the summer, and we are rounding out this week and next week, another series of conversations with the principals and various members of the school on what projects they would like to see undertaken through the fall and winter, which will take us through January. So, that also was outlined. Right now, we have about 40 projects that have been identified, and I suspect the 1st of October will turn those loose and work, again, over the next three months to have those implemented, and then do the same thing come January for the next quarter. On the capital budget, I'll yield that to John, he's, I think he distributed a separate summary. And again, most of those items, he and I went through with Mark Miano, and I think I'm getting, after six months, more comfortable with the schools and some of the, the items that are in the five-year budget. So, I think we've done a pretty good job in the last 30 days of identifying what we believe are a good five-year capital plan to move forward on. And then, finally, I had listed in the report other issues, and these come from a variety of sources, but the ones that are kind of top of mind are the environmental reviews. We've engaged the Environmental Quality Assessment Group at the, at the state level or the Commonwealth level to do a review on Odysseum. So, they come in, do testing over a two, three-day period. School has to be in session, we'll get the results of that report, and then implement, you know, the appropriate follow-up actions. And then, finally, we've implemented some follow-up actions that my predecessor set in motion on the lead in the water quality at the high school. I have a meeting next week with the Commonwealth representative on this project, and I'm happy to report some of the initial work we did with the replacement of the bubblers and some filters have been in place, and this fall and winter, we have the balance of those scheduled to be put in. So, I'll have more updates once I have my meeting next week with the Commonwealth on that. So, with that, I'm open to questions or comments or concerns.
Okay. Dr. Seuss?
One comment, two questions. Comment is, that it is a major source of frustration for high school students, that they don't have the ability to drink water without carrying a water bottle, which most of them do not, or had not until the current situation. And so, I hope we can, I know it's been difficult to find something, but we can find a solution where kids can have the ability to drink water, because not having access to water makes it hard to learn, makes it hard to concentrate, you know, it's just, it's incredibly frustrating. Then, I, two questions. One- One is, what do you see, in terms of the, um, outdoor spaces, the playgrounds and stuff, do you see the facilities department as being in charge of that? Is it now clearly under the aegis of the Parks and Rec Director? In the past, it's been very unclear about what the, you know, who is sort of in, in control of that? Is there clarity that you know of?
Yeah, that's a good question. So, on, um, each of our little one-page, um, summary sheets of what, what we're working on at each school, identifies the playground as a category, and so I've worked with John Marshall, Parks and Rec. So, we have a clear line of sight on which part of the schools are park and rec, which part are, um, uh, fall under the purview of facilities in the school. So that was step one, so I think we have clarity there. Uh, step two, in terms of on the facility side, if any of the playgrounds of which were responsible, anything that's broken, repaired, looks to be broken, um, those immediately go in the same category, like a water pipe that's burst or heat that doesn't work. It's what we would consider an urgent repair. And so again, senior custodian, junior custodian, and admin are told to call the helpline, and then the helpline dispatches, um, resources to take care of the problem. Now, we can't always replace them, as we found out at Pierce. Swing broke, we dispatch, take the swing down, we have to order the swings, it might take three or four days to put them back. But it is a conversation, not a work order, not an email, not a text message. On the DPW side, or the Parks and Rec side, um, Jeff Reichman liked that approach, and so he offered the same helpline, to our school administrators and our senior custodians, that if they see, because they're the closest to it, or a parent offers, hey, this is broken, then the senior custodian, junior custodian, admin, again, call the helpline, but it's Jeff Reichman's number. And then Jeff Reichman dispatches his team. So I think we're gonna give that, um, this is, again, the evolution of it over the last thirty days. We're gonna give that a try, and if it's working, we'll stay with it, if it doesn't, we'll change it.
Okay, great. So, people don't have to think in advance, oh, is this a school playground, is this a park playground? You know, because schools have them next to each other, so, it, it sounds like it's essentially a great solution.
Right, I think the agreement that we have with, uh, Mike Radamacher and Jeff Reich, Reichman's team is that our senior custodian and the admin are the two, uh, gatekeepers of what needs to be addressed immediately. And playgrounds are in that category, like everything else. The only difference is, um, they're gonna call a separate helpline for that, not ours.
Oh, I see, it is a, they have to know which one it is, then, okay.
If they call our helpline, our helpline will refer it to Jeff Reichman, but rather than have it have two phone calls, I don't think it's too complicated, and it's about a handful of schools, it's not every school that has that situation.
Right.
Um, I will also add that with the Hardy, uh, playground work, um, in doing the Lake Street Playground, where we have, uh, permits and drawings all signed off to basically design and build that playground, we also add on, just like Parks and Rec does, an independent, um, firm to do inspections before we open for play. And that independence inspection firm is a part of our preventive maintenance. And so both Parks and Rec and facilities are using, at this moment, Nancy White, I think your name is, to do, uh, annual inspections of all the playgrounds. And then we can put that into our, our normal process to address any repairs ahead of somebody reporting a broken swing.
Great.
Mr. Curden?
Thank you. So on the Odison, uh, environmental review, can, can you give a little bit more information about what, what's been looked at there?
There was, uh, I think, two concerns if I recall. One was, um, kind of a dampness. I don't want to say, um, it was mold or it was anything, but there was just a dampness in a couple of rooms where we had roof leaks. We had cleaned those up, we had dried them out, and there was a lingering question, did you get everything, is everything cleaned up? So, that was one element of the study. The other one was, um, I think air conditioning in, we are, we're replacing an air conditioning unit there, and there was some questions raised in the office area of whether, the air exchange was sufficient. So those are the two things I recall as feedback. This primarily came from, uh, Eileen Woods, I think the former principal, and Jason Levy, the, uh, teacher representative.
So, are they looking at just those two items, or are they taking a look at the whole building?
It'll be a comprehensive review. So if you look at the most recent, um, one that was done, was done at Brackett, I believe about five years ago by the Commonwealth, had a series of recommendation, and so as a part of our preventive maintenance, we've gone back to Brackett, and we have to wait until also October, November, when the school's fully in session. But there was a series of recommendations made five years ago by the Commonwealth, and we're just going back and re, um, engaging, um, a focused effort to make sure that each of those items are still copasthetic with the building. So it ranges from, um, you can't have teachers put, um, plants and organic material near the heater vents, because that blows, you know, dust and mold and particulate. Did you clean the, the, um, the air conditioning ductwork in the last five years? So those are the kinds of things that we're inspecting for at Brackett, and we'll have the same, I assume, similar recommendations on Odison.
Okay, and is that something that we would do periodically for each school as they grow older? Like, the Hardy's, and Brackett was the oldest renovated school, I think Hardy was next, so?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Mr. Heaton?
First of all, I'd like to say thank you for coordinating and identifying who owns which playground. Do all the principals and head custodians know which one to call?
Yeah, it, it actually says Park and Rec, and we also have some notes about what year it was built, when it's programmed in the budget to be replaced, as well as some technical things about how to tighten bolts and put the fire down, yeah.
But it's clear so that i- if a parent or, so, if there's a concern, something goes down, the right person gets called and notified right away?
Right, we keep reinforcing the message, Bill, that, uh, parents and teachers should reach out to their senior custodian, and if they're not available, then the junior or the admin, and the same for the principal.
Is, if I may, if the, is there any difference in time response? I, I guess?
I don't believe so.
Okay, because before, the, one group would get almost immediate, and, uh, I'm lucky I'm in this playground and it's covered by this group, and then two years later, the other group seems to be coming onboard. It's, there's, it sounds from what you're saying, there's good communication, good coordination, and things are working together.
And teamwork, that's the third one, right. So, that's an important element, but it's, it, these types of things, even with doing the preventive maintenance, when something comes up, I think we're, we're moving past the, do I own it or do you own it? If, if someone points it out, you own it, and you have to solve it, and the resource you have are these two phone numbers. Uh, the only I would say is the Parks and the DPW and Reichman have an advantage, because they stock supplies we traditionally haven't. But we're working through that, because now John Marshall's helped me identify the make, model, and serial number of my playground equipment. So in terms of swings, where DPW's been generous to just lend them, and we'll figure out who pays the bill. Going forward, there's some parts that we probably need to stock in facilities, and, um, and then we have them on the ready.
Thank you.
Well, Steve's here, I want to acknowledge, um, what a, a great addition to our team has been the last six months since he has come here. We, we've always had some processes in place, but I think you can hear tonight, that when a process isn't working well, ready to jump in and see if we can create something new, and then if we find out that doesn't work so well, we'll adjust that as well. So it's, it's, it's evolving, uh, with, but the intent is that we're trying to, to have very efficient, well-maintained schools. And, and I also want to acknowledge the work he did with Gibbs, he didn't mention this, but, um, uh, he has been very much a, a strong partner in the construction work that we've had, particularly at Gibbs and, and at Lake Street. But Gibbs was very intense this summer, just making sure everything was going smoothly. And so I want to appreciate that, that work. Thank you.
Thanks.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve.
Nice to meet you.
Welcome.
Okay, moving on, we have the review of, oh, and just for the committee, so both of these are items which we had identified that we wanted to listen, we wanted to hear about annually, and we slotted them into this time, so that's why they're being brought up now. Review of capital planning requests for the coming year by Mr. Dinesio.
Thank you. Uh, and Steve is here to add anything that, uh, we have any questions that I can't handle, that, um, Steve may be able to handle. Uh, so what you had in your packet was, um, a spreadsheet that just listed everything that's on the five-year plan, uh, currently into capital, listed by year, and what the projects were, what the dollar amounts. And then the memo that was with it was just a, a just brief description of anything that was new this year, that was added this year. So I could, I can just quickly go over the memo, uh, for this year, of what was added new, maybe touch a little bit on what's in the ask for this year that's been on for multiple years, and then maybe take any questions on if there's anything we don't get to. Uh, in the memos, sort of just broken into the, the three categories of, uh, really two categories of what we're asking for. In, in the first category is vehicle replacements, and what we, we try to work on a, a five, six, seven-year cycle for our, uh, student transportation vehicles. That's our bus, buses and vans, uh, and our Explorer and the Prius. Um, so right, right now, what, what's the, um, we currently have nine, uh, six, six, uh, but, um, vehicles for student transportation that are on the five-year plan. There's, there's, um, two that are on this year, and the one that was added new is on the last year of the plan, because, um, that's the year that it's, it's due to be replaced. That's an eight-passenger, uh, Explorer, it may not be replaced with an actual Explorer, it may be some sort of van, but it'll be that type of van around that cost. The other two are, are activity vans. One is for athletics, which has been, um, has been on the, uh, ready to go on the plan for, um, for FY twenty-five, but was, I mean, I'm sorry, for FY twenty-four. But we thought we, we'd have to move that up, and we'll talk to Capital about that this year, because of the wear and tear, they're just not even, they're not able to use it like they used to. So we're really not getting the value, uh, right now with it. Uh, so we're gonna try to see if we can move that up to this year. Uh, it's been on the plan, they'd known that it was coming, we thought we could, we thought we could wait till it was, but it's just, uh, it's aged. The last vehicle is a, is activity van again, but it's for the after-school program. And this is, they're sort of gonna use it as a pilot. The source of funding is, is, is coming from their balance, uh, from their program. So, uh, Capital would like to hear that. But what they want to do is, is see if this adds some flexibility and potentially saves a little bit of money for them, for when they have to, when they're going on a trip somewhere, and they have to rent, um, through a vendor vans, uh, and then they're sort of tied by what time that vendor can get there and what size vehicle they can get. So the idea is for them to try this out and see if it was potentially, uh, good for them, and then maybe grow that to, to another van, or possibly two, depending on what size their program goes to. Uh, also new this year in, uh, repairs and infrastructure programs, uh, projects, there's two, two projects for Bishop School that are, um, some exterior painting in a roof that are in the out-years. The roof is just, uh, twenty twenty-four is when it's, uh, due on its useful life to come up, so it's, it's new, it's, uh, it's new there and it showed up. And the exterior painting was something that S- Steve had worked with the principal on identifying some of the areas of the exterior that are in need of some touch-up, uh, maybe not right now, but, uh, we want to make sure we get it on the plan, so we can, uh, plan to get it done over the five years. There's, um, at the Gibbs School, we just finished the Gibbs, uh, School and opened it as, um, a great-looking school. There was, part, part of the initial plans was they had to move the air handlers on the roof to a, from a flat roof spot to a pitched roof or sloped roof. So now we need to have, uh, catwalk or some wave for, uh, maintenance to safely get to the, to the, to. So this was not part of the original project. There will probably be conversations at PTBC about getting this as part of the project. But just in case, we put it on the capital plan, so that if it doesn't make it into the project, it's on there and we can, um, potentially get it done. Hardy School has two, uh, two projects on there that weren't part of the original, um, project. When we, you may remember when, um, I think it was about a little over a year ago, we had come up with, what else might we do at Hardy while we're there? And a couple of the things that were on that list were to replace the existing boilers in the existing building. There's two boilers in there, they're kind of old, they're getting close to their, end of their useful life, uh, they're not high-efficient. So the idea was to replace, if we could, to replace those two with three high-efficient, um, boilers. That's not part of the project right now, it is something we would want to do, um, over the next few years. So we have a placeholder for it on the capital plan in case it doesn't make it in. The new part of the building, the new addition of the building has its own boiler, um, so that won't, won't be a problem. And there's also, um, Hardy rooftop units, the air handlers on the roof, uh, same deal, uh, when we were, um, looking at the building and evaluating the building for the project. The, the HVAC people were able to look at the, take a real good look at those and said, you know, those are gonna, those are gonna go over the next couple of years. So we have a, uh, we have the ability to get these on the plan, so we're not, uh, an emergency and, and, um, having a, a bigger issue. Uh, there's one on there for Odison, uh, that's new, and that's, um, roof, again, it's twenty twenty-four we're talking about here. So that's, uh, about the time when we're gonna need to start talking about Odison. We have a placeholder with a dollar amount, uh, but that, given the make, the way that building is built, there may be a chance to break that into smaller projects. And as we get closer, the, uh, facilities team will, uh, explore if there's a, if there is a chance to change the roof material, uh, if there is a need to. Uh, there's plenty of time for that, but there's a, a good estimate in there for that. There's another, uh, new one for Thompson, when, since we've built the, um, addition at Thompson, maintaining heat during the extreme cold, uh, days has, has been an issue. There was talk about, about trying to, um, replace, not replace the heat pump, um, but make some sort of modification to the heat pump so that we could maintain heat, heat in, uh, in the whole building during the extreme years. We talked about it last year, and we wanted, it was, we wanted to get a whole, a full se- heating season in to see if that was really the case, or if some modifications we made last February were gonna help. We, they changed the way some sensors were to see if maybe that was the issue, but it hasn't, so we're gonna put it on, uh, capital and ask that we, we move it up to this year. And then the two new ones I saved for last were, they're new this year, and they're through, um, lots of hard work by, uh, Steve and his group, meeting with all the principals, and things that have come up at each school are cooling issues and, uh, security improvements. So, what we're trying to do is put, is, is get funding this year for both of those, to have someone in, uh, for the cooling, to have someone come in and take a look at each building and tell us what are the options in each building for potential cooling solutions, and where is it really needed? Is, in some buildings, it only needed on the third floor, is there something we can do that's not air conditioning per se? Maybe there's dehumidification or something else. So the idea is we'll ha- have a study done, and then we have money in each of the out-years to implement the recommendations of that study. Really, not sure just yet what, if those dollar amounts are gonna be sufficient, but it's best-case estimates through, um, you know, through what Steve and Mark were thinking about, and the security is the same thing. The security may be, it's, have a study, have them come look at entry areas, line of sight, cameras, um, security glass replacement, have that study done, and then have some money in the, in all of the out-years to implement, um, you know, some, some of those. And then the last new one in the out-years is the, uh, twenty twenty-four, just our photocopier lease, that they, they added that to the capital program a few years back, and that hundred and twenty thousand is what the school department's allotment is. So, our photocopiers cost more like two hundred thousand dollars, it's offset by a hundred and twenty in capital, uh, each year. So that's why that was added new in the last year. Uh, just a couple of projects that are on for this year's requests that have been on for a long time. Another one at Bishop School is the, if you're looking at, at Bishop School from Crosby Street to down Columbia to Stow, Croft, or whatever that is, there's quite a slope there. The landscape on there, the, the The landscape on there, the, it's very hard to grow grass there, there's a lot of erosion, and that doesn't help with the water. So the, we, it causes a lot of water infiltration problems and you can't, it's dangerous to walk on with no. So there's, there's a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that's been in there for, to make some sort of landscape improvements there. Part of that one twenty-five will be to figure out exactly what's going to work best. And then the rest will be to implement that. There's another year of screen, screen replacements throughout the district. There's lots of places where we don't have screens in the upper floors specifically, so we can't open the windows at night to cool the building down during the warmer seasons. So that's, you know, we've, we've gotten money two, two years in a row. It really never got off the ground. Steve's done a great job to have, he has projects queued up, he's got stuff out on the street. What, what happened before is we got the money, we tried to get, we put a bid out for them to do certain places and didn't get any responses. And then we finally did get someone in, it wasn't, we weren't going to be able to do it with the amount of money we had. But now we've really made some traction through Steve's hard work and we've got someone on board and get the projects queued up to go. There's three hundred thousand dollars for, in this year's ask, which would be for next year, for the Pierce School playground. We have twenty thousand dollars currently from last year's ask to, to design the playground. So what that's, what we're trying to do is leverage whoever we hire for Hardy to, to try to do the same thing. And we think the dollars will work out because Hardy, we have through CPA money, we've got thirty-nine thousand dollars last year. But that also includes construction oversight. And we think if we take that piece out and put that in when we, in the money when we actually build it, then we can maybe still be able to get construction documents, design, surveys, you know, of the parents and some meetings, have the architect or landscape designer at some meetings with the parents. There's a facilities truck along with a plow that's been on for, for many years. There is the Hardy School, the Chandler Street Playground is on a request for next year. We just talked about the design for that. There's some exterior, exterior step work at Odison that's going to be broken into two phases. That's on there, that's been on there for, for a few years. And then there's a couple of transportation vehicles that are just on the normal cycle that are being asked for this year that are in the normal cycle.
Mr. Hayner?
First off, I'd like to thank you and Steve and everyone else who was involved in getting that swing for the kindergarteners at Pierce. It meant a lot to a lot of people. Thank you all.
That was Steve.
Couple of questions. You mentioned already the, the catwalk at Gibbs. That'll be, that's up for discussion, who owns that? I guess you and I will be beating on permanent town building committee to have the other people.
Yeah, I think there's three of us here that will be pushing for that.
That's good. The Thompson School, I, I'm a little bit confused. Is this heat pump going to be replaced or is it going to be added to?
It's actually a four-player, it's a hydraulic pump, so it's not.
Steve, can you come to the mic?
I'm the microphone, I'm sorry.
Because we can hear you, but people on TV can't, or people watching us on TV can't hear.
He didn't know we were on TV until now.
We have millions of viewers.
Big event.
To be clear, for Thompson, it's a hydronic pump. It's about this big, and it basically circulates the hot water through the pipes. And when we, when the expansion was done, those pumps should have been resized to accommodate the addition, and they weren't. And so as John pointed out, the idea was let's see how it works through a heating season, and it doesn't have enough oomph to basically pump the, the warm water through where it needs to go. So that's a pump replacement, not really a heat pump per se, it's a hydronic.
Okay, my last question is, are we looking at all the schools for the future? I think you, you mentioned, in other words, I'm very concerned about Bishop because Bishop has had a lot of issues with the, the water that you mentioned and the drainage, which results in, in mold and mildew and things of that nature. And we've talked about it, we seem to know what the cause is. We've had money, I guess for a couple of years now, we haven't done it. Is this something that's going to be done before we have the water again?
Well, on Bishop, we just spent between sixty and eighty thousand dollars.
Yeah, so we have, in our capital, we had a three-year progression. We were going to do the parking lot first, replace the tank in the parking lot, resurface the parking lot to take away from the puddling there. The next step is to fix the grade so the water doesn't pour down from there. And then the final stage, which is in, the next, next year at this time, we'll be asking for it, which is three hundred thousand dollars to then reseal and replace brick from where the water infiltration has been.
My concern is, and I may be wrong, but I think almost every year we have an issue of mold and mildew. And it, it may not be an annual thing, but it.
There's already, there's already been water in Bishop this year, even after the.
Okay, so, I mean.
Right, and, and I'm sad to report that we had it in Gibbs as well into the foyer, the high school.
I realize you two happen to be here. I don't mean to lay it all on your, your doorstep, but it's important that we deal, deal with this because, that, you know. Thank you.
And I think the multi-year approach was so that when we get to the end, we won't have that problem anymore. We just got to get to the end.
Thank you.
So just to clarify, this is the request that we're making, we don't necessarily have all these in place, is that right? Or when we go to capital planning, we're making this request, but it hasn't been voted?
Correct, so anything that I just said was new this year has never been on their plan before?
Right, so we, we don't, I mean, they've been generous with us, but it's not yet finalized yet.
Correct, yeah, and we've, we've gotten the warning shot saying it was a heavy year for requests, so be prepared to.
Got it, okay. And we don't seem to have anything on technology equipment this year.
So there's a whole nother piece that Dave Good submits on behalf, that's, you know, the whole.
So it'll be in the capital plan, but it's not in your plan, is what you're saying?
It is, yes, I'm sorry. I could, I could bring that to the next meeting if it's helpful, but it's.
Yeah, actually, we've, we've been interested in just the new technology plan coming forward, but.
Four hundred thousand dollars for machines, one hundred and eighty-sixty. But maybe it'd be helpful to have Dave.
Okay, great, thank you.
Or when the technology plan comes, maybe that's the time to talk about it.
And then if, if I can, I'd just like to express some frustration. I checked Novus this morning and didn't see some of these documents that we're talking about tonight, and it's just frustrating to get things the last minute.
Okay.
Thank you. So thanks for presenting on this. This is a, you know, a first for us and it's good to have this information, so thank you for, for doing that. So two things, on the, on the playgrounds, I thought we were, we were working with the rec department to do a survey of the condition of all of the town's playgrounds, school, or town, to develop a, a regular plan for repair and replacement. Did that happen or, or not?
It's been initiated, yeah. So the first step, John Marshall and I put together the inventory. And so we know make, model, part, year. And then we're in the process of engaging a common resource for annual inspections. And then the third piece is that capital planning piece. So we've just, really just begun that. I think what, what, put that temporarily on hold is when we both realized, I think John's been here just maybe a little over a year, not quite two years, is this jump ball, if you will, that keeps reoccurring as to who is supposed to fix what. So I think we wanted to solve that first, and then we'll come back to the longer-range, five-year capital planning for equipment replacement.
Okay, because there's, I mean, there's nothing currently in the plan beyond next year for any, any new playground replacements.
Well, there's, there's the Hardy, Chandler Street.
Right.
And then there's the Pierce.
Right, but that's all for next year.
And then beyond that, that's the plan that John and I are working through.
There's one other that because Bishop isn't a school department, there's, after the three hundred thousand dollars for next year for Pierce, there's twenty the following year to study for Bishop. And then in the rec department's following year, they have a three hundred fifty thousand dollar placeholder for Bishop Playground because it's actually their playground. So we may end up taking that twenty out of ours because he has twenty-two and using that for another needs assessment. They have a needs assessment, which they did, I think, believe it or not, I think there's thirty-two playgrounds in town or something like that. So they have a needs assessment, but it wasn't from all of them. So if we wind up that John's money for planning is in there and ours is in there, we'd use one of them for a needs assessment. But that's still two years out, so.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we're not stopping at Pierce. We're still looking at, I mean, Brackett would probably be the next oldest.
Yeah, that'll probably be after that.
And the other thing, just as a question, for the, for some of the larger repairs in the out-years like the Odison roof and the Hardy HVAC, have you considered the accelerated repair program from SBA?
We haven't specifically talked about that, but.
Is there any reason why we wouldn't consider that?
No, I don't think, I don't think there would be. I mean, I think anything, the only one we may be winning is if, if there was something that was going to happen at Odison, we wouldn't want to do an accelerated repair to push us further out for anything else. But there was no, there's no reason in.
Okay, thank you.
In a capital, they're very, I'll tell you to look, is there any other funding sources for that specifically?
We should check that box.
Yeah, yes, definitely, thank you.
Actually, I just wanted to ask again about, to ask about the money, the CPA money for Hardy. And I, I just didn't get where everything was going, so I know there was thirty-nine thousand to study and design something was, was eventually what, what was decided. So what's happening with that?
So I'm pretty sure from the scope of, we worked out the scope of work last week with Jim Feeney and John Marshall, and Steve couldn't be there, but the, we were getting together to look at that scope of work to see how we would pare it down for what we would need for Pierce. And that had, you know, a certain amount of parent surveys, parent meetings, design.
Is that, I mean, this is, but this is the CPA money, can they, I mean, have they agreed to that?
This was all in their scope of work. This was all in their proposal to be approved, that was approved last year within, because originally it started at fifty thousand dollars, so they took some of the stuff out of their original proposal to get it down to that number. But there, theirs also includes construction oversight for.
Right, right.
So, and that's a big chunk of it.
Okay, so, okay, so are you talking about using the CPA money differently than not just, okay.
No, we're talking about the reason we thought that that thirty thou, that, that our twenty thousand, even though it's half of that, might still work is because if we leveraged it, we hired someone to do that, there would be, still be two separate projects, separate funding sources.
I see, okay, I get it.
We can say, okay, this is what we're doing, this is exactly what we're doing here.
Good, okay, thanks, thanks for clarifying.
Sorry, that wasn't good.
No, thanks for clarifying.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much, thank you for chiming in on this too. Okay, so moving on, we have the district goals. Dr. Boddy?
Thank you. So let me just, before I begin this, put a little context around what you're going to be seeing for those that are listening, perhaps for the first time, about district goals. A number of years ago, I, I can't really remember how many years it's been, five, six, seven years, the school committee met and developed four overarching goals that becomes the vision and sort of framework for the work that we do every year. And there are four major categories, there's student achievement, professional learning and support for our educators, infrastructure improvements, and community outreach. Those are, they're, those are the main idea of them. So every year, we look at different initiatives that we can do to further realize these goals. And it's, it's something that's not, you don't get to, you're always in process and moving and improving. So this year, we are approaching it a little bit differently in that we have, we have a couple of objectives under each one of these overarching goals. And in, in some respects, they are a little bit more specific than the overarching goal, but, but also somewhat broad in order that we can be a little bit more specific with the school committee of specific actions that are going to be taken. Now, I, I do want to say that the actions that are here are either at the district level, multiple grades or a grade. So there are other things that are going on in the district, and I don't want anybody to think this is the universe of them because each school has school improvement plans which have goals, which, while they align with this, but also can be unique to their school. We also have departmental goals and of course, teacher goals as well. So with that, we had a, the first, the first time you saw this, you saw the goals. Okay, the first time you saw the goals, you saw them, just the, the actions for each of these objectives in, pretty much in the order in which they were, they were added to the chart, to be honest. But in thinking about this more, we decided to go back and regroup them in a different way so they, you could get a much better sense by grade level as to what's, what is happening. One thing that you will notice is that there are a lot more actions both in the category of student achievement and professional learning. In fact, there are two objectives under the first, the first goal. And the first objective is students will engage in curricula that are designed in response to the district vision as student as learner, remain in alignment with state standards, and are coherent within each discipline. Now, in this, one of the things that you will be getting down the road is a specific student outcomes with respect to all of these. Because the whole purpose of these goals is to be able to support our students both in their learning and in the learning environment and the buildings in which they are, they are learning. So the student outcomes, and I'm not going to go through each one of these, like this is student outcome for this, but talk about this in more of a global way. That the reason why we do these things is to improve student learning. And some of the, some of the, the outcomes that we would expect going forward is that we want, we want, for example, to have all students, more students, have one adult in school that they can go to. And that was something in our youth risk survey that we found that it, that percentage wasn't as high as we would like. We would like to see fewer students leaving class to go to the nurse, that, that's taking away from instructional time. We will expect to see student achievement scores go up in MCAS or AP or SATs. We'd like to see the achievement gap reduced each year from where it is now. We, we might, some of these may be more immediate, more quantifiable, but some of them will be more long-term. For example, something that we might offer might motivate a student on a career choice. We want students to increase their feeling of belonging and feeling welcomed in school because the research is very clear on this, that when students feel safe and belonging and feeling a part of a classroom, then, then their efforts increase and their achievement as well. We want our students to be taught by teachers who are growing themselves, both in terms of their content knowledge, their cultural proficiency, and pedagogical skills which support social-emotional learning in their classrooms. And, you know, another one, in one particular one is that we'll have teachers that are trained in the youth mental health first aid. So these are the types of things that we would expect to see as a result of implementation of these actions. I think it'd be rather tedious if I go through, read every single one, though I'm happy to do that if you want, but I'm, I was thinking in each one, sort of touch on a few of them. For example, in Objective 1.1, which I, I read to everybody about the curricular, the curricula being in response to the district vision of student as learner, there are twenty-three actions, and they're, as I said, grouped by, by grade levels. So let me just pick out a couple of them because they're all important, but there's a couple that are sort of, you know, stand out in this. And I think that one of the things that we're looking at is one ways to do better screening for reading needs. And in that effort, this year, we're going to be administering a rapid naming assessment, which has been identified as a screener that is, that helps us better understand the cognitive profile of each student. We are, we're now in the, the last implementation of the Turk investigation programs at the elementary. This will be grades four and five. And of course, the thing is with all of these actions here, there is a, somewhat almost a corresponding professional. almost a corresponding professional learning that goes on to support that. So for example, with the Turk investigations, there will be, there, it started even the first day of school to give an overview of that, of the curriculum work there, and that will continue all year. In fact, one thing we found very successful last year is that we actually pull teachers out for a half-day, or even a whole day in some cases, to do intensive professional development in this. We're progressing with our science curriculum at the elementary, this is our, we've already implemented them all, and now this is the year to provide more resources. We are implementing the new sixth-grade science curriculum. The sixth-grade music curriculum is also being revised this year, as well as the computer science program. There is a new computer class for seventh-grade students at, at Addison, and we are piloting new science materials in grades seven and eight that will be implemented in the next two years out. In grades six through 12, one of the big initiatives this year is revising the Algebra I curriculum. And, and as you all know, that we have new social studies, history frameworks in Massachusetts, and so the effort is, particularly in grades six through 12, is to align the curriculum in eight, in history and social studies to these, the MA state frameworks. We want to, we're continuing to emphasize a focus on voice and perspective in the teaching of reading, and developing thematic units in world languages. In grades nine through 12, we will be restructuring the visual arts program, and one effort that we are focusing in science is developing co-talk classes in physical science and biology, and also changing the Curriculum B science program, so that it, it rises to the level of a Curriculum A rigor. So at the high school, we have basically four levels. We have AP honors, Curriculum A, and Curriculum B, but our intent is that all students will be taking science at Curriculum A level, obviously with support. There is now going to be standards-based course outlines for the performing arts courses. And then, a new certificate program that'll be introduced at the high school is interdisciplinary programming, it will pilot the first cohort of the Design Thinking Certificate. As you know, right now, we have a biliteracy certificate program and a, and a global citizen one. So that is the, that is Objective 1.1, sort of a summary of the actions there. Objective 1.2 is looking at how students will develop their social and emotional skills through age-appropriate social-emotional instruction, which emphasizes an awareness of cultural bias, and by learning in classrooms where responsible decision-making, empathy, and the importance of positive relationships are the norm. And we have six, sort of more district-wide initiatives in this, and we talked about that a little bit before, which is developing a, a district crosswalk, outlining the intersection of cultural proficiency and social-emotional learning competencies. We continue with our work of Safe and Supportive Schools plans this year. We're looking at instructional materials, both at, for, for use in performing arts, performing arts curriculum, but also we're looking at selection of instructional materials to support cultural proficiency. In grades seven and eight, one of the pilots this year is the Aspire time block, which is announced, and in that block, the reason it comes from Aspire is announcements, snacks, planning, inspire, rest, and engage in learning. So it's, it's a pilot, and we may find that we actually need more time, and more specific guidance around that time as we go forward. So in grades nine through 12, what, as you heard last year, Dr. Jang are talking about the collaborative problem-solving training that all the administrators, actually about 20 people engaged in, this is a program through MGH and Harvard, and this year, the plan is to provide professional learning in this for all teachers in the high school. So that sort of gives you a flavor of what is happening with the, but the overarching goal around student achievement. So, the next major area is professional learning, and the, wait a minute, I haven't been keeping up with this. Karen, you should signal me.
I'm sorry.
It's all right. I'm sorry about that. This, by the way, will be available online, we'll get this up.
It's in Novus, yeah.
In, yeah, in Novus. All right, the high school certificate. Done to one point, there's two major initiatives under Goal 1, the overarching Goal 1. So now we are into professional learning. And the, there are two objectives in the, in this particular area of effort. So, two, one is professional learning for educators will reinforce targeted components of the academic curriculum, social-emotional competencies, and pedagogy, and will emphasize culturally competent and data-informed instructional practices that support student learning and growth. So what does that look like in terms of what were specific actions? So, one is that we are planning this year that all APS teachers will engage in a minimum eight hours of cultural competency professional learning experiences. Some of that will happen at the district level on Professional Development Day, and some will happen at each school. And we are looking at a pre-K to 12 SEL, this is Social Emotional Learning Curriculum App, and comprehensive training for all staff in your, in universal SEL curriculum and programming district-wide. One effort that we began last year is training staff in the youth mental health first aid. Last year, I think we had 200 teachers that were trained, and we are on a, a goal to having 300. Some of that happened, actually even before school started this year. I can't, I'm not going to be able to go through everything, but we're going to be, have an emphasis in Special Education Department to work with staff on how to identify reading disorders through different diagnostic assessments, and how to deliver and design interventions matched to the profile of the reader. We're, heavy emphasis this year on developing a data team in the district to look at data that we would find useful in, in plotting out our, our plans for the years ahead, and, and for that matter, this year. So in pre-K through 12, one, we're going to do training in the Social Emotional APL State Standards, and implement those standards through the pyramid, pyramid model in both pre-K and K. At the elementary level and middle school, in the, in the Special Education Department, we have a, a program that we are engaged in called MATCH, which is Modular Approach to Therapy for Children with Anxiety, Depression, Trauma, or Conduct Problems Protocol. And we, I think that Ms. Elmer talked a little bit about that, and we will be happy to do an update on that initiative that we're engaged with Harvard on. We have been training our elementary and our middle school staff in responsive classroom. We ran three, three, three-week sessions this summer, and about 90 people were engaged in that training. As I said earlier, we're going to have a lot of work in math for the, for the implementation of the grade five, four and five Turk program this year, and there's, as I said, all of the work that we do for student achievement has to have a corresponding professional learning part. If we were go on to, to Objective 2.2, this is to increase the diversity Arlington Public School staff over the 17, 18 staffing levels, and there are a number of initiatives that we're going to continue doing, but try to do even more of this year. And I think that as we go through the year, Mr. Speaker will talk more about that. But, one of the, one of the things that we want to do this year is establish a mentoring program for all new teachers of color, and that is in progress. So those are the first two. We're looking at student achievement, what are we going to do to improve that, and what are we going to do to support teachers in, in this effort? Now we're going into Goal 3.1. And this is a goal about infrastructure, and we are looking at data. So research, so the first objection, the three in, in Goal 3. 3.1 objective is to research and implement a data platform to support the district in collecting, aggregating, analyzing, and sharing student data, in order to assist teachers in targeting instruction and improving student learning and wellness. And, and we're looking at a number of databases, we're looking at data around discipline, but I think the most important one that we're trying to find is a good platform for how we can keep a lot of our student data around achievement. And this is difficult. So now we're, we, Dr. McNeil can talk more about this, but we're actually looking at to see if we can, if possibly Power School, which is a student management system, can be, can be extended into doing something like this, because you have to have the data readily available if you're going to actually use it as part of meetings with teachers to see what we're, you know, you, you, you want data to inform any initiatives you do, and you just don't want to be guessing at, well, we should try this, if there's no, nothing to support that. The second major objective under this is to complete the schematic design plans for the high school, and we are very much engaged in that right now, and maybe Mr. Thielman will talk a little bit more when we get to that piece of it. And the third one is to develop a multi-year, a multi-year financial plan for the Arlington Public Schools, and we'll be hearing more about that, and there's a meeting of the Budget Subcommittee and CIA Committee later this month to, to see the progress we've made in doing that. And then the last, the last major goal has to do with, with community and parent outreach. And under this particular one, the objective this year is to provide all stakeholders opportunities for input into schematic design of the high school. And to that end, one of the things that just happened this week was another, was another community forum, of which we were going to have more as we move forward, and is certainly one of the outreaches, it's a passive one, but it is a updated website. And then, lastly, as a, a major objective is to provide elementary families timely, user-friendly, and up-to-date information in elementary schools and their curricula. We have a very robust website for teachers that has curriculum plans and resources, assessments, it's very robust, and continually becomes more robust. But one of the things that I think that we have needed for a while is a, a place on the website where parents can go and, and actually see the curriculum at the elementary level, and that is one of the, the goals that we would like to have completed this year. And that work has been, work, work has definitely begun, and in fact, it began on that the summer. So that's a quick overview of where we are. As I said, one of the things that you will get in the next few weeks, month, is something that will actually take each one of these and talk about what is the rationale for it, and, and what is the particular evidence. So, I don't know if you have any comments, any questions?
Mr. Heiner.
First off, I'd like to commend the superintendent in the way she presented this. It's clear, even I can understand it this year, thank you.
Good.
At this time, I'd like to move that the superintendent report back to the committee in late February or March on the progress of each of the goals with specific evidence regarding each goal. Second.
Don't we have that?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Briefly speak to it. This is in line with the state's superintendent's evaluation that, somewhere halfway in between the evaluate, the beginning and the ending of the evaluation process in the middle, that the superintendent bring back a progress on it.
I think what you're going to see is this spread out over the year.
Well...
It was even, it was even hard to say all these, you know, without turning, without everybody fall asleep, but...
I guess what I'm looking for, you said you're going to be giving us a chart.
Yes, yes.
Add one more column, 20%, 30%? A piece of that, a small piece of evidence to direct us to where to, where to find it. I, I'm not looking to add a lot more labor, it just gives us a spot for us to make, see what's coming, know what's happening, give you a little plaudits, ask for clarification for the, for the old man and things of that nature.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Morgan, did you want to speak to your motion, or your...
No, I'm kind with what Mr. Heiner said.
So, I don't remember, and Jeff might remember better, last spring, we voted on a policy update which required a mid-year serve report. We added that it should be written, because in the past, we've gotten just an oral report, and I don't remember the date, but, but I'm wondering if we need this, given that we've already, I, I mean, what would be different about potentially your motion is that you're asking for an update on every single one of these?
The goals...
Plus, I think what we'd ask for in the policy is a written mid-year report on sort of the key overarching goals, right, and this, and superintendent evaluation. Do you remember, do you remember Jeff?
I do, I, I don't have the policy in front of me, but I know we had a, if I may...
We had our best discussion about this, yeah.
Can anyone do research on the fly to figure it out?
Lena, are you looking it up?
What I'm looking for, I'm not looking for a, a, part of the issue that we have every year at this time, is that we're all trying to scramble of, in this, and I don't mean this negatively, I've, you got, I'll stop.
It says, "By March 31st of each year, the superintendent shall report, shall present an interim report on the progress made on the goals agreed to the previous June."
And we, we said, we said written, I remember, that was an amendment that we agreed to. Yeah.
I guess what I'm asking for is by adding one more column, what I suggested the superintendent, it would be in writing, it may not be in prose, but it, it would give us a direction, the status of what, what is going on, and allow us to ask any clarifying, clarifying questions and stuff for the superintendent. That's all I'm looking for. It's there.
Okay, so it sounds like it's in policy, the date, the timing's a little bit different, because it, in policy was March 31st, is that right? Whereas you were saying February something? Are you good with this?
I'm not going to be obsessive over a date. I, that's fine.
Okay, can we withdraw your motion because it's already in policy?
As long as we're all clear that it's coming.
Okay.
I withdraw.
Okay. Does anyone else have comments or questions about the goals?
So, this is a lot of great detail, it's, it's great. There's two things that I maybe worry about being overly ambitious. One is that it seems like there's a tremendous amount of professional development in this plan, and I'm wondering how realistic it is to do all this in one year. And the second thing I'm wondering about is the curriculum site on the webpage, and, and maybe given that we have this huge webpage for teachers, maybe it's not that hard to present it to, to parents, but I'm just curious about whether that is doable or an optimistic your plan.
Well, it's optimi, it's not optimistic, it's doable, but there's a lot going on as you can see, and this is generated from principals and curriculum leaders. They feel confident that they can do it, and they're working toward it. Are they going to achieve everything? Are there things that are going to wrap into next year? Yes. Remember, we started talking about a strategic plan, that you, I think to Mr. Heiner's point, where are we on this? Do we, do we need to do more next year? I don't think these are all endpoints. When you do professional learning on social-emotional, or any of these, it's just ongoing, you just have different efforts. So there is that area, but there's also the curriculum area, and that is, anytime you do an implementation, new curriculum, you have to do that. area. And that is, anytime you do an implementation, new curriculum, you have to do that. You just, it's essential. So, these things are, many of these things are going to happen because we are implementing these programs. And so, that has to happen. Will teachers feel that it's been sufficient? That's something we will survey them and find out, but we'll probably need to do more. The thing that's always a challenge is time. It's a huge challenge. And we have, we try to do occasionally, do in the school day, professional development, but that requires more substitutes. And that's been a challenge to find. So, that has been an issue. So, we may find some obstacles that we, along the way, that might make some, some of this difficult. But we'll report out as we go along.
Any other comment?
Yes. So, just to comment on some of the curriculum development efforts, we had a brief discussion at Policy about, you know, the school committee's role in adopting curriculum. And, you know, the policy we currently have says, "All new programs and courses of study shall be subject to school committee approval, as shall extensive alteration of their content." So, you know, I've been following the school committee for a long time. And I think the last time a curriculum came to the school committee was the kindergarten tools of the mine. And it's obviously a judgment call as to, well, is Turk Math an extensive alteration or not? I don't, I don't know. But some of these things, like teaching artistic behavior, does seem to me to be an extensive alteration of the curriculum. And so, I would ask that you take a look at the, the things that you have in here, the curriculum developments that you have in here, consider whether it's an extensive alteration, and then have that curriculum leader come to us and present for our approval. Thank you.
Anyone else have comments, questions?
Actually, I have one more, sorry. Just, just to get a better sense of the State and Support of School Plan. So, this is the year that we are rolling out the plan that was studied and developed last year. Correct? Is that, is that, that's sort of the?
Yes.
Okay.
And they'll have actions that they will be doing in their schools. And then, there is a, there was even last year, a district-wide committee. That committee will exist again this year.
Okay.
I suspect that that committee will exist for a number of years to come.
So, at each school, is, are, are the committees still active and engaged, or are they less so?
Um, there's certainly a representative from each, each school. And that representative is supposed to be working with the principal and their colleagues on implementing the plan that they have developed for their school. So, is it, I'm not sure, I'm not sure if I would say it's active. It's, the plan is active in each school. But is there a committee that's active? I'm not sure about that.
Okay. Thanks. Thanks.
Okay. I had just one minor comment. I have to find it. Just the, for Goal 4.1, you talk about monthly public forums and for the schematic design. So, we're not going to keep going after, I mean, we're going to have one in January and February, but then
Right.
we're not expecting to continue. I mean, we'll see where we're at at that point. But right now, we don't have others scheduled. And I'm just wondering if we want to say there'll be four monthly public forums, or, you know, it's, because right now, it sounds like it's
Yeah.
going to keep going and.
Well, at the time, we wrote this, we didn't know how many there would be.
Okay.
And we could amend it, just to say there'll be four. But then, yeah, probably will only be four.
We'll see at that point. I'm just saying, right now, we know there'll be four. And I'm just questioning, promising something that we aren't expecting to deliver at this point.
Okay.
But that's all. Okay, so, do we need?
Let me see if I can, I can amend that.
Okay. Do we need to have a motion to approve these?
I'm not sure. We approved the goals back in June, and we.
Yeah.
Did, do we need to approve the actions?
Well, no, the, the goal, you're right.
But we already approved the goals.
Yeah, you did.
Didn't we?
You did, yeah.
Yeah. So, I think we're good.
Yeah. So, we don't need to approve the actions?
No, I think we're fine.
Okay. Okay. Well, thank you very much. And we look forward to hearing about them in March.
On schedule.
And along the way.
And along the way, I think, along the way, yeah.
Okay. So, moving on, we have Policy BEA, regular school committees. Now, I didn't, when I started this, I didn't realize that Mr. Schlickman would not be here. I know this is very near and dear to his heart. So, we can have some discussion about it, but I'm, I don't, we shouldn't, certainly shouldn't take any action. Can someone who is on policy talk about it?
I would recommend, if we're not going to take any action, which I, I support, and I agree with you, why don't we just hold it off for another meeting?
Okay. Can we?
If we have discussion, and the discussion gets really pro and con, and Paul's not here, we may end up doing the same discussion a second time. That's all I'm saying.
Okay. So, let me.
I moved, we, we moved this to a date in future.
I would, I would like a chance to make a comment first.
Sorry.
Okay. Just, I know that, that Policy has been concerned about, that feeling that Tuesdays would be a better regular school committee meeting date. I would just point out that right now, Building Committee is on Tuesdays and looks to be on Tuesdays for the next six years. And we are in, we're already at two meetings a week, and we're looking at potentially going to more than that at various times in the project. So, I'm just saying, right now, Tuesdays are pretty booked for two members of your committee. So, that's, that's my comment. We can, I'll bring, I'm going to put it, the same thing, and we'll have the same discussion next time.
I, I hear that. And let me just share this with you. We have, if you look at the minutes that were provided today in nervous, the major issue has been the attempt to get the school department, not the whole town, just the school department, to keep the second, those two Thursday nights sacrosanct. Example, one member tonight had to come later because of a school thing. Now, if that, that was the main reason. The reality is, this town is very active, and you cannot find, you need an eighth day, if you're going to do it. I hear you, and I agree with you. I would prefer to keep it on Thursdays. But there are members of this committee that want to take an active part in other functions in the, in the school department, and we're prohibited from doing it. So.
Okay. We'll have more discuss, I'm going to, I'm, no, we're taking this, I'm taking.
We have a whole year for the school department to make an effort.
I'm taking this, we're done with this topic now. Thank you. We'll bring it up next time. Superintendent's report.
All right. Well, the first one is update on school buildings. And you heard the update on, on Hardy from Steve Nestorak. Gibbs is, Gibbs is doing great. It's, he really is doing, the building is beautiful. We had just one problem, flooding. It really wasn't flooding. It's just water coming into the vestibule. I think that they've solved that problem, so that won't happen again. We are going to have a, we're thinking of having the ceremony this coming Sunday, but it turns out that too many people could not make it. But we, right now, we have, we have a tentative on the 21st, but we're still checking out people, if they can be there. But we do want to have a ribbon-cutting ceremony and an open house. And the sooner we can do it, we would like to do it. So, the ceremony will involve some of the key people who have been involved in the project, you know, saying a few words, you know, including our architect, and she could make the 21st. So, we definitely want to nail this down, and get this on the calendar, so people have plenty of time. But the, I just want people to know, there is a strong intent and plan afoot to make sure that we have an open house for everybody in the community very soon. Then, we talk about the high school. And that has been, there's a lot that's been going on with that. At Town Day, we had a booth to try to help, you know, people, educate people, and be there for people to answer questions. And we talked to hundreds of people. We've also had a forum this, this last Monday, in which a number of topics were addressed. And I want to say what a great job that you did in giving an overview of where we are. And in fact, you may just want to sort of repeat a little bit of that right now, so people can know that weren't able to attend. You don't have to read the whole thing. That took about 20 minutes, but, but you did a fantastic job of saying where we are and where we, where we're going.
I understand I was loud enough. People told me I was loud.
Was longer than that?
I was loud enough.
Oh, you were plenty loud. That was good.
Yeah, I should, yeah, I should. Well, I would, you know, I think the most important thing to understand is, it's a very complicated project. We spoke, there were some people in the community who took exception to our decision to build a brand-new school. And we explained that to people. And I think by the end of the night, most people accepted that. There's conversations taking place about the, the front lawn. And the Building Committee will look at ways to have a front lawn. And then, the, you know, the, an important area of discussion is cost. And we're trying to explain to people that it isn't more costly building than other buildings in the Commonwealth, because this facility houses a high school, a preschool, the lab collaborative, community education program, plus administrative offices for the town and for the district. And so, it's a very complex school. And there's no other place in town to put those things. And so, if we, we build a new school, we have to build new administrative offices. And at the same time, and even if we were to put them elsewhere in the town, the savings might not be all that great. So, it's a complicated project. There's, there's, and the other thing for people to understand is, we have, there is no design yet. There's no design yet. There's, there's massing diagrams. And the architects are going to start to give us some ideas over the next few weeks. We're going to have a conversation at the upcoming meeting about design elements, and design ideas, and how design works. And then, we're going to go from there. So, I mean, we're, we're still, we still have a ways to go. And we're targeting a vote in June.
The issue of cost was certainly an issue. And right now, I think it's important to people to know that the number that's been floated out at 308 million is the high watermark. That was to take into consideration all the possibilities and things that needed to be addressed, including the contamination of chromium in the back of the school. So, it's going to change as we move through this project, for sure, because it'll get tighter and tighter in terms of what, what needs to be actually accomplished. So, I know that was going to change, but also, just that you're right. The design is not done. In fact, just beginning on the design piece of it.
Beginning.
So, we, it will be helpful, we're, we're planning, and Dr. Allison Ampe is on, is on the Communication Subcommittee also. And there's a plan for one forum on the 24th of October. There's another one in November, and one in February, late January, early February. So, it was very helpful to hear what people's points of view were. And, and I will say, the people were, were very courteous. It was, it was a, a lot of good points that were made in very respectful ways. And so, I'm anticipating that will continue, as we have this, this dialogue about the school. It's a huge investment. And, but we're also ultimately trying to create a school.
We're trying to create a school. That's the most important thing, is that the, the whole project is driven by the educational plan, developed by Dr. Jenger, Dr. Bodie, and their staffs. And we are going to be inviting town meeting members to visit the school and meet with the architects at the end of October and early November. So, it'll be a chance for all the town meeting members to come on through the building and get a bird's eye view of what the physical plan is like, and also to learn more about the academic program that's informing the construction of the new school.
We will do that. And we will also offer this in January, probably, to more people. And I think we'll have, as we go through from January on, we'll have more tours of the school. There's certainly a virtual tour that has, that, that people can look at to get an idea of the school. But it's not quite the same thing as actually being in the school. And we were, we're planning more, and certainly getting that information out over the next couple of weeks.
Let me, just, I want to add a little bit, just about the September forum. If people weren't able to attend, we have put a really brief recap, which includes the presentations and remarks that Mr. Thielman gave, that Jim Burrows gave, and the landscape architects. And there's also a link to the ACMI recording of the forum, so you can watch it. And if there, the feedback that we gathered from that forum was really in the term, in, in the form of questions or, or comments. And people can, if they weren't able to attend, they can email the committee, and the email link is in there. So, all of this is at our website. It's AHSbuilding.org. And you can find it under News, under Updates.
Just a suggestion, and using the technology, show a day in the school with the kids in the hallway, the crowded hallways, the kids literally having to sit in the hallway and stuff, has a breakout space today, between classes and stuff. It'd be great to have some of the people actually standing in a hallway during, between classes. Because as big as I am, I step against the wall. Because these kids have to get from point A to point B. And it's wonderful to do it the first week, because they don't know where they're going, kids and stuff. But part of the virtual thing of showing the downside of this building, people talk about all the extra space we have. A lot of it's in hallways and stairwells, that is not usable.
I just want to say that, thank you to the work that you guys did. It was a great meeting. And I think the point that you brought out, that I think was most salient, is the, that the discussions that the community is having now
Yeah.
mirror the discussions that the committee has had for many, many months beforehand. And, and it's, it's sort of natural that, that the discussion would get more heat in the community after decisions have been made. But it was just sort of par for the course. But, but it is interesting to see many parallels in the sort of thoughts and concerns in the community that the Building Committee had as well.
Yeah, absolutely true.
Yeah.
Every discussion that's taken place in the community, we've had in the Building Committee.
Yeah, yeah.
There are, I mean, there's a lot of hard questions, a lot of trade-offs. And I think we're going to have a great new school, and I hope the vote, I think the voters will eventually support it. But in the final design, we're probably, not everyone's going to get everything they want.
Yeah.
That's part of how these things work.
Yep.
Mr. School Committee Room?
Well, there's been a lot of conversation about the School Committee.
We want a couple parking spaces. We need a couple parking spaces.
I'm sorry. We're not doing this now. Okay, Dr. Bodie, anything more?
We were doing so well, Bill, tonight.
I'm sorry.
High school, though. We've already talked about the green ribbon and Gibbs. But I did want to mention enrollment. And I, I think there's some parents here from Bishop that have stayed with us the whole evening. It is true that the class sizes at Bishop are a little bit higher in some grades. The highest, and I think that when you get in grade two, 26, I think that that can be problematic. And we are, we definitely are looking at how we can get some more support there. It's, it's challenging, honestly. We still have a lot of TA positions that remain unfilled. We have, it is on school spring. So, when we're looking for TAs, teaching assistants, we actually already have a pool that's there that we can go to. So, the, the thing that happens is, is very hard to control without having some ability when people move in, to move them into another school. And to, and I would say that in general, our buffer zones have worked well. Though this year, it did work well, but our, I think something like 80-some percent, I, I don't know the exact number, had their first choice. But it says that they're working, but we're also getting a large number of parents who are, are getting their, their first choice. But I will say that sometimes that happened in the summer, after we added classrooms. Because we would go back to the parents and say, would you like to go back and have your first choice? Because now, we have another classroom. But it, but it is an issue. I, I don't disagree with that. So, we will be looking at that possibility. But as you, and there are, there are inequities across the district, but it's also how it falls, in terms of where people move in, which we have no ability to control that. But I would say, at second grade, there's a fairly high consistency and range of, you know, 21 to 26. So, we're seeing a lot of classes at some of our lower grades in the mid-20s, low 20s to mid-20s. And, you know, that, that corresponds to our enrollment growth. It, and we need to take another look at whether we could do with space and distribution of students. So, as we, one question that had come up from the So, as we, one question that had come up from the committee last time was for us to take a look at the McKibben analysis of where we are in terms of the forecast. And we will do that in comparison, the seventeen numbers to the eighteen numbers, but we have to wait till we get the October one numbers. But what you have is the McKibben comparison of sixteen to seventeen. And it's very interesting, because we have, these, when they say admin enrollment on this form, those were the October one verified numbers. And then, take a look at the forecast. But the thing that's interesting is, at particular grade levels, they would be down. In fact, a pre-K was down fourteen percent, but another grade was up four point four percent. But the thing that's interesting is that when you total them, the percentages, it was zero percent change from the forecast. It's just it varied within the, within the grade levels. I don't think we're going to see the same thing from seventeen to eighteen, though. We have enrollment growth from last year. Our numbers are not, our numbers are changing. From even when we started, beginning of the year, they're going down in terms of total enrollment growth, because what has, what happens is that parents, families leave, they don't notify us. And then, then that process of sort of catching up in power school begins. And that's actually what happens when you do the verification that goes through the DUC, Department of Education process, is to see where those students have migrated to within the state. So, our numbers, we, the last time I reported to you, are, we had increased about two hundred and fifty students. We're down from that number right now. I don't want to say what that number is yet, because again, we're in a verification process. But it, it's going to be higher than two hundred, probably closer to two fifteen, two twenty. But still, that's a big increase in one year. But I don't know how, other than asking parents, if you're going to leave, please notify us back in, you know, the spring, the summer. But absent that notification, we have to wait until we, we go through the September, just to see where we are. But we will, I will get you the comparison of McKibben, once we get our October one numbers, and see where we are.
Okay.
And we're going to do the same thing, John and I talked about that today. We're going to do the same thing with our predictions as well.
Okay. And are we working on figuring out who we would want to hire to redo this, or?
Well, that's a question I think we need to talk about, maybe subcommittee, what we want to do about that, and cost, and, yeah. Or whether we want Dr. McKibben to do it again. I mean, that's another option as well.
I think we need to understand what, who are our options, and, and do it.
Sure.
There you go.
Wait, Dana, sorry.
I have a couple of questions. So, the first one specifically about the second grade at Bishop. What I'm hearing, so what I noticed last, earlier this week, was that a specified first-grade TA for Stratton was posted on spring school, which I assume is a large class-sized TA, which is a good idea. Well, there was one posted, so, I don't know. So, I'm wondering, so what you're saying is, is that we have sort of a pool of TA applicants, because we have so many TA positions posted? So, it would be possible to pull from that pool to fill a position, to fill a TA position at Bishop, or?
Yeah, it, it could, absolutely.
So, how would the decision be made to, to, like, what's the, what's the trigger that actually makes the decision?
I think that for, for the grade-two class at, at Bishop, when you start getting twenty-six, I think that is definitely a trigger to have a TA. I'm not saying we'd have a TA in every single classroom, because I'm not sure that we can do that. But I think that to have extra, an extra TA for that grade, we, as I said, Mr. McInnerty has told me that he is making sure that during the course of the day, that there's usually two adults in the classroom.
We know that some of those people are, are, are part of our special education program, and they're assisting other students. So, my understanding is, is that I'm sort of really only interested in talking about general ed TAs, because I think we really muddy the water when we talk about, I get they're adults, but they have specific responsibilities that are beyond working necessarily with general ed kids. So, I'm concerned about the twenty-six, twenty-six, the twenty-five is also just slightly materially less enormous. So, I, you know, I would like to understand when, so my understanding is, is that there is a large class-sized TA in that cohort presently.
Yes, there is.
So, what will be the, you know, what would be the trigger to add a second large-class-sized TA in that cohort?
I think it has to do with whether we, the principal feels that it's, they're inadequate. Even with the large-class TA, the building TA that, that I understand is assigned very much of the day to the second grade. And then, we also have, as you say, the special education. But there are usually two adults supporting the students in the classroom during the course of the day. And I know Marion wanted, Marion Nolan wanted to say something.
So, just, being at Bishop, I know we continue to have a full-time second-grade large-class TA that floats between the three classrooms right now. And that TA followed the students from the first grade to the second grade this year.
Mr. Hayner?
Just looking at the chart that you provided us, there are several classes, kindergarten, first grade, fourth grade around, there are four classes, and they are within one or two, more or less than the three classes. In other words, seventy-seven in a fourth grade at Dalen, seventy-eight in a first grade at Thompson, seventy-five in a kindergarten at Stratton. I mean, having a, a, a technical, a teacher assistant supporting three classrooms is not the same as having a full-time teacher. You know that, I know that. Space is, it, it's a matter of taking probably one of the specialist rooms to, to do it. The same time, as mentioned tonight by one of the parents, the value of having that extra time, the professional teacher there, TA, I'm not trying to take anything away from the, the TAs, but they are not the professional teacher that has the responsibility for the full education. The TA is the one supporting the teacher. And aside from equity, and, and the budget is, is a consideration, but both those things should be secondary. It's an important thing.
Well, one of the things, for example, just in the last, in terms of enrollment, we're down thirty-six students than what we thought we had two weeks ago. And what, one thing that happens, and maybe this is what I need to emphasize to parents, is that we build class sizes based on the enrollment and what's in power school. And when parents don't tell us that they're leaving, we may have them in a, in a classroom, so they don't show up. So, you start developing these inequities at, at different grade levels. And there, there also, the other issue is, it does not necessarily appear in here, is the, in schools where we have a program, the level of inclusion that might be in a particular classroom that's not reflected in this chart.
Mr. Hayner?
The important factor is how many children, then, what we need is documentation of how many students are in there on a full-time basis, okay? We're not asking for specific, if you, if you want to fall back that there are some specialists in the room at different times during the day, and trying to mitigate the student-teacher ratio, we need to know exactly a chart that shows the students that are staying there on a regular basis.
We can do a chart like that, and I think that that was a request. And that is something that we can do, now that things are starting to settle down.
Right.
So, you can see what the, what the student, actually, the number of students are in the classroom for most of the day.
And we probably should have these discussions, we talk about it each year, after October first, because that's when the state, we've sent our numbers in. And that's, that's the, the point we're going to get. If we're going to talk money, that's the time we know exactly, and we're, we're going to have. Do we get re, chapter seventy money for students that are out of district?
Of course.
Okay, then I, I, our enrollment figure at the bottom of this does not reflect that.
There's a separate report that we get after October first that has that.
It has it all?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Morgan?
So, I want to second what Mr. Hayner said. And what I, what I would like to see is, I don't want to, like, parse between most of the day, or all of the day, or, like, I, I just, I don't want any gray area about that, preferably. Like, all of these SLC students have some, like, designated classroom that they are attached to. And I would like to see a chart that tells us how many of those kids there are. Most of the day, like, I don't, I mean, what's most of the day? Like, is, I, I don't know. I just, I feel like these, you know, twenty-seven, nine, and fifteen kids are distributed. And, and I think, you know, the Dalen number, I wanted to ask about that, actually, because we used to have fifteen SLC kids at Dalen, and now we have nine. And I'm just wondering where six of them, do we know where six of them went? We do. Okay. So, do, okay, fine. So, but these, especially Brackett and Stratton, where there's twenty-seven and fifteen, respectively, it really, like, skews the columns there, because we, you know, it's really hard to compare across. So, and it looks like, the Hardy number looks like a minus seven to me, from where we were a few weeks ago. But that looks like an, an arithmetic error on the kindergarten cohort, was presented on September sixth as being eighty-six, but it was really eighty-one.
It was eighty-one.
Yeah, so there's five kids right there that we didn't lose or gain.
The arithmetic error, right.
It was just, yeah, so they were never here to begin with.
Right.
So, well, which is fine. No, no, I mean, but, because, because otherwise, it was kind of weird that, like, some schools, like, plus-two, minus-two, like, feels normal, like, minus-seven felt like a lot. Pierce was at minus-six. So, I guess a lot of those kids didn't come, or, I don't know where they went, but, so. But anyway, yes, I would love to see a chart that reflects our SLC population, and I would love to see a chart that explains, you know, what our plan is within each of these buildings as we see, you know, because right now, we're wedded to this map, right? This, we're, you know, if you have a student who moves into the, to the Bishop district, they're going to Bishop, as long as that's where they wanted to go, right? Like, we don't have any wiggle room based on our current covenant that we've agreed to with this map. So, I would really like to know what, what our plan is, especially for Bishop, Dalen, and Brackett, with, if we needed to add another classroom, where is that going to go?
You probably meant this, but if a student moves in, it doesn't matter which grade level, and they move into a, a buffer zone, it's, it works whether they're in kindergarten or fifth.
Of course. No, but if they move into the Bishop proper district, which I'm assuming that we got one more Bishop second grader, or maybe they weren't represented on this chart, my assumption would be that if there was any choice but to put that second grader at Bishop, we would have decided not to do that. We would have either sent them to Stratton, or sent them to Thompson, or sent them anywhere else other than there. So, you know, clearly, that student, so given where we're at right now, any student that you have that comes in to those specific school zones, they're going to that school. There's no, there's no negotiating. So, I just, I would like to know what the space plan is for those schools, so that we can be really transparent about that.
I, I think it's very clear to say at Bishop that if we would need four kindergartens next year, and we kept the configuration as it is right now, we would take either the music or the art room, more likely the music. That is our choice.
Mr. Carden?
Thanks. So, I think everybody's made, answered my, asked my question, or made my points, but I just want to reiterate on the Bishop second grade. I mean, this is the class, the grouping that was in first grade last year, had the issues. Only one class-sized TA ended up being added, even though we, you know, raised concerns about that. You know, there's six other groupings, three of them are at Brackett and Dalen. So, there's three that aren't at Brackett and Dalen, that are the same, basically the same or smaller, that have four classes. So, this is a group of kids that for two years in a row have had large class sizes. And, and I think the sentiment is that we should put another TA there, and it's already October, and we don't have one. So, I just want to add my, my, my voice to the, to the support for getting another TA there, at least. It's the least we can do. And if that cohort stays that size next year, then we really need to think about breaking it up, so they have at least one year in their kindergarten career of having a decent class size.
Anyone else want to speak? Okay, I'd just like to add my concern that I think we're past the studying point for the second grade. I think we're at the action point, even if the principal is not telling us what the action point. I can just look at these numbers, and know second graders, and say, we're at the action point. And it's not, we're not asking, we're not asking about the safety questions, about is there adults in the classroom and things. We're concerned about the educational benefits. And as Mr. Carden points out, that this is the second year in a row that these kids have had large class sizes for this young age. And we can't open up another class, or, it's not in anyone's best interest to open up another class at this point, where, let alone whether there's space. But having other adults whose purpose is to be in the classroom for all the kids, not just some of the kids and, and things, I think it's, it's time to really do it. So, anything else for?
No, I have nothing else on, on my report.
Okay, then we move on to the consent agenda. We are moving. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the committee so requests, in which event the item will be considered in its normal sequence. Approval of warrant, warrant number one-nine-zero-four-eight, total warrant amount three-hundred-seventy-six-thousand-four-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars fifty-five cents, dated September thirteenth, twenty-eighteen. Approval of minutes, regular school committee minutes for September thirteenth, twenty-eighteen. That's all. Can I have a motion?
Is it moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Any appoint, any?
Opposed.
Any opposed? Okay, so that's unanimous. Now, we are discussing policy, EFD meal charge policy. Who wants to, I think we have to discuss this. Who's on policy and can bring this up, since Mr. Schlickman's not here?
I'm here. Did, did he agree with my email that we should bring it up? Or did you, was this based on my email?
This was based on your email that it needed to happen before September thirtieth.
Yes. Well, that was my reading of a news article about this, that there was an item in the budget, the state budget last year, that said we had to distribute our policy about school lunch fees to the public. And we don't have a policy currently. There's an official, probably an unofficial district policy, but there isn't a school committee policy on it. So, we had this in our regular, our regular policies that we were developing. So, we, I thought we should pull it out and adopt it separately, because it's actually a October first deadline to publish it. We can, we can distribute it by putting it on our website, and I don't know what else we need to do. But, so basically, this is the MAS C version of the policy that they developed in response to, and originally, it was a federal USDA policy change, and the various news reports about, you know, lunch shaming and all that stuff. So, that's the background.
So, it's a first read tonight, but we just publish it as a first read, and then adopt the next meeting? Is that all? Because it just needs to be, it just needs to be published, correct?
So, I didn't, I forgot that Paul was going to be here. I might suggest that we waive our first-read policy and adopt it immediately.
Yeah.
And then, I think we should send it back to policy, just to discuss, and we can re-adopt a revised version.
There's two motions, there's one to waive.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I just want to say, I, I read the policy, and that is our practice.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Right.
Mr. Hayner?
Which one do you want first, the waiving of the, the reading?
Need the waving.
Can I ask one question really fast before we go?
No.
Just the one thing that it said, it pulls out the à la carte items specifically. And I was just curious, is that more at Gibbs, Odison, and the high school? So, if someone were to go and want, and their balance was zero, they couldn't go and buy a slice of pizza, but they could go and get a full lunch? I'm just curious about, like, the, like, how that, you know what I'm saying? Like, because I, and I, so, limited to second entree snack, ice cream, or an additional beverage. I'm just curious how that works. I'm more interested in what's, it happens in practice than what's in the policy.
What happens in practice is they really don't. What happens in practice is, they really don't differentiate.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
All the billing is handled very discreetly with the director and the parents, but we simply don't deny students lunch.
Great, and if they were to come and just order, like, a slice of pizza, instead of a whole lunch, that would just go through as well?
Well, you can do that at the secondary level, but you can't do that the elementary.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct, okay, I just wanted to, yeah.
There isn't such a thing as à la carte.
At the elementary. Well, there's ice cream.
You could definitely get, like, two lunches.
Or milk, it could milk, yeah. But we're not going to have a student not have a carton of milk.
Okay, great, I figured.
Yeah, why not?
Move to suspend the rules of second read to implement this particular policy.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then, does someone want to move the?
Move to accept, policy EFD meal charge policy.
Okay, can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, this one, is there anyone who wants to speak to the motion? Okay, I wanted to bring up one thing, which can go to policy. I have heard multiple parents complain that their children, although they bring a lunch to school, tell the teacher that they want to buy lunch, and I'm concerned that this policy doesn't have any way of differentiating those kids from kids who don't have money in their account. You know, these kids, the, the parents, like, kept the, hasn't put money in, because their kid's not supposed to be buying lunch, because they're bringing their lunch, and I'm, I don't know how logistically you work this out, but it's, it is a problem for some parents, and I'm just bringing it up now, and it's something I think we should think about, because parents are then getting billed for things that they didn't authorize themselves, but their child did. So, it's an issue for some. Mr. Hayner?
As a prior teacher, there's enough parent responsibilities laid on the teacher. I don't know, I, I mean, if a child brings a lunch, if a parent has a problem with this, I think they need to talk, talk to the principal, and work it out that way. I'd be really opposed to try to create a policy.
I didn't say, I wasn't, I'm putting out the problem, yes, I'm putting out the problem. I'm not suggesting a solution, I'm not, certainly not suggesting this teacher is the one policing it. I'm saying, this is a problem, and this policy kind of perpetuates the problem.
Well, I, I would recommend that the superintendent talk to her principals, and work out some solution there. I don't think we, we should be involved in this part of it, to be very honest with you.
I think it, we're setting up a, I think it's, we're involved, because we're setting up the policy that makes this a problem, so, and this.
Bring it back to policy, and we'll work it out.
Yeah, okay. Ms. Seuss.
Oh, so, I'm not sure if it's a policy's issue, I mean, what I would say that's probably the solution, is a very swift communication to the parents, that there isn't money in the account, but their kid has bought something, and that that would then communicate, you know, you don't want to discover months later, your kid's been doing this, right? But if you discover a week later, then as a parent, you have, you know, a little bit more control over it. So, I, you know, I think that communication potentially is, it's a crucial thing there.
Ms. Morgan?
So, we get, and at least I get regularly at By House, an email that their account has depleted to some level, and that I need to, like, put more money into it, so, like, because I have it set up online, and I just get an email, and they say, your kid has no money, and then I can go back and look, and say, oh, look, he bought lunch twice yesterday, and the day before, and the day before that, which is why he has no money in his account. Because if he goes back through the line a second time, he can.
So, you're saying there is communication, you're getting that communication.
Yes, I'm getting that, if you're using the online account, but if you're writing a check, and sending it in, you're.
If you never set it up, then you. Yeah, so I think the solution there is to communicate quickly to parents, you know, your kid's buying lunch, even though you don't have an account, and then parent can take it from there.
I'm saying it's still happening, and you're having to pay for that, even though you didn't, that wasn't your intent.
Ooh, yes, I am, but I guess I see that as, like, a parenting thing.
Yeah.
He's a growing boy.
Okay, okay, so, any other, just, I mean, that's something we can talk about when you're actually going over the, so.
Yeah, it's a good point, it says, right now, if parents, guardians have issues with student purchases, they should contact food services for assistance, I think we could put another sentence in there, that, and in that case, food service can deny the lunch, just to clarify, because, so, good point.
I think it should be something, so, okay, any other comments on this, and we'll, so what we're going to do is approve it for now, discuss it some more in policy, and maybe bring back a slightly revised version, but now we'll have the policy. Mr. Hayner?
Suggestion, when you publish this, just say, this is temporary, or something, that the full policy will be forthcoming in the future. I just asked, I don't know.
It can be minor changes.
We adopted it, so it's.
Yeah, it's the policy.
Or we're about to adopt it, so it's.
The policy, okay, anything else? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that passes unanimously, so now we have a lunch, and, and we'll, Karen, we'll get this up on the website, okay, so there, we have satisfied our.
Karen, it shouldn't be, it should probably be on the actual, not just in the policies, but somewhere on the school website, near the, where the lunch menu is, or something.
The lunch menu, okay. Okay, so. Moving on, professional, paraprofessional negotiation committee appointment, can I have a motion to add Dr. Seuss to the paraprofessional negotiation team?
So moved. Thank you for doing this.
Okay.
Do we need to also remove you, though?
That's a good point, can we add this?
What?
Can we?
There's usually two members at that level.
Mr. Schlickman is a member as well.
Right now.
She is.
I am, also.
Can't be more than three, then.
How about you let me finish my sentence? I need to be removed from this, I realize with building committee, I don't have the time to take on a full nether set of negotiations, much as I enjoyed working with you folks, which is why I said I would do it in the first place, so, so can we have the motion be amended to add Jennifer Seuss, and remove me from the paraprofessional negotiations?
So moved.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Any opposed? No, congratulations, you're on, thank you for serving. Okay, subcommittee reports, budget.
So, we are trying to schedule a meeting, not for next week, but the week after, to cover some of these items.
All right.
Not, not the multi-year plan, but there'll be some talk about how the multi-year plan dovetails with our regular annual process, and setting the budget calendar for this year, and doing some other things, so that'll be scheduled hopefully tomorrow. That's it for now, oh, there's a long-range planning meeting tomorrow, so we will have an update on that for you at the next meeting.
And multi-year plan's 17th, is that right?
The multi-year plan meeting is the 17th, yes.
Community relations.
We have a meeting scheduled for Tuesday morning, and I wanted to tell the community that our first chat, school committee chat, where you can bring your questions, concerns, complaints, whatever, to us, is scheduled for, what day is it, sorry, I have to look my calendar.
October 6th.
October 6th, thank you, at 11 o'clock at Cafe Nero, so, 11 to 12, so please come. Of course, if you can't make it, you can always send your questions, concerns, to any member of the committee, anytime you want.
Okay. Curriculum.
Well, our next meeting is, is the joint CIA meeting on the 17th at 7:00 p.m.
Okay. Facilities.
No, no meeting scheduled this time, I'm going to be talking with John about that, but again, I would like to commend John and all the people involved in dealing with that lack of a swing at Pierce's kindergarten playground, it's dealt with very quickly and very efficiently, they have a swing.
Policy, it's not here, anything, we've already discussed, so.
Yeah, we had to miss, we had to cancel one of our meetings, so we're, we're a little bit late on our schedule for finishing the policy review, but hopefully it will still be done by the end of December.
Okay. Legal services.
Nothing at this time.
Okay. Building committee, we already heard from, Gibbs committee, nothing to report? And any liaison reports, announcements, or future agenda items? Mr. Hayner?
Future agenda item, I would like to ask for an executive session for the purpose of negotiations, to create a job description for an administrative position.
Which mentioned? Mr. Bealman?
So, I think, you mean, you're going to talk to the chair about putting something on the agenda for the next week?
Yes.
We need more specificity.
Not after tonight, yes.
Okay, because we need more specificity.
Right.
And we need to make sure that it.
Yes.
The future agenda.
Absolutely.
Because just creating a job description.
No, 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 I understand.
Isn't a negotiation necessarily. I don't know if it would qualify, based on what you've written, I'm not, said, I'm not sure it qualifies.
Okay.
Okay.
I will figure out if it belongs in executive session.
But he made a motion.
No, that was a, that was a future agenda.
Okay.
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 Not yet, but in, in the spring, or early, or winter, I'd like to see a report on empty classrooms, you know, sort of how many classrooms we have left, if we have to create one, at the elementary school level.
May I just make a comment? We have no empty classrooms.
I know, that's what I put in quotes, I know they're not empty, but how many, how many could we squeeze in and repurpose? Yes, yes, yes.
Should be a good report.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, do we need to go into executive session? No?
Good job, Chrissy.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Oh, this isn't, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, we're done.
Thank you.